Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Science City Council Regular Meeting for Monday, October 11. The time is now 6:30, and we'll just start with today's meeting. First up, we have a roll call. We have our deputy city clerk. Actually, this meeting is, before I do that, this meeting is being livestreamed using Zoom. Please allow one person to speak at a time. I will call on every member to make sure you have had an opportunity to ask any questions. I will not ask our deputy city clerk to start the roll call, please.
Mayor Guerrero.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Borisma.
I'm here.
Counselor Farmer.
Here.
Counselor Beeler.
Here.
Counselor Rastucci.
Here.
Counselor Hicks.
Here.
Counselor Hart.
Here.
Interim City Manager Alba.
Here.
City Clerk Venteria.
Excused.
Interim Finance and Admin Service Director Horner.
Here.
Fire Chief Anderson.
I'm here.
Police Chief Escalera.
I'm here.
Public Works Director Fisher.
I'm here.
Deputy City Clerk Grandville, and I'm here.
And thank you. We have a call today. So our first item of business is going to be a proclamation for National Native American Heritage Month. So go ahead and read the words. Whereas during National Native American Heritage Month, we celebrate the rich tapestry of indigenous people and honor their sacrifices, which we recognize as inflexible, woven into our history of this country. And whereas Native Americans are descendants of the original indigenous inhabitants of what is now the United States. And whereas Native Americans have moving stories of tragedy, triumph, and perseverance that need to be shared with future generations, and whereas Native Americans have enriched our heritage and continue to add to all aspects of our society through their generosity of culture and the continued practice of teaching economic, environmental, and cultural sustainability. And whereas our country is blessed by the character and strength exemplified by the Native Americans who have answered the call of service in our armed forces in greater numbers per capita than any other group in the United States. We honor our Native American veterans and those who are serving an active duty for their bravery and sacrifice. And whereas the city of Sunnyside is committed to engaging in dialogue led by travel communities around the communities and work in which they are currently engaged in the areas of self-determination, sovereignty, and cultural preservation in order to create an active government of government-to-government collaboration. And whereas during the month of November, we honor our native people and this, their ancestral home, and recognize their continued contributions in strengthening the diversity of our society. And now therefore, now therefore, I, Francisco Guerrero, as Mayor of Sunnyside, Washington, do hereby proclaim November 2021 as Native American Heritage Month. Encourage all citizens to join in observance. Testimony whereof I have here on to send my hand and cause the seal of the city of Sunnyside to be affixed done at the city of Sunnyside this 10th day of May and the year 2021. Okay, up next, we have public comments. Madam City Manager or our deputy clerk, do we have any public comments emailed or sent into our office?
I've received none. Ms. Rangel.
I received none.
Thank you. Do we have anyone in the audience who would like to submit public comment today? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to our next agenda item. We're just going to consist of our consent agenda. Payroll vouchers number 119009 through 119012 and wire transfers as listed for $591,103.06 for the period ending on September 24, 2021. Claim vouchers, approved claim vouchers numbers 102134 through 102179 and wire transfers as listed for $142,512.39 with a period ending on September 29, 2021. Approved claim vouchers numbers 102180 through 10224 and wire transfers as listed for $126,897.38 with a period ending in October 7, 2021. Counselors, any questions, comments, or not elected pulled of the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Farmer. I have some questions.
Go ahead, Counselor Farmer.
Okay. In reviewing my notes, I see I did write warrant number or check numbers down, but I do have a question on office of minority and women's business for $150. What was the purpose of that check?
That is an annual assessment that the city is required to pay in as a political organization. We've paid it every year for a really long time.
Okay. And then Language Line Service and Apple Valley Interpreting. Are those for the court?
The Language Line Services is mostly used by our dispatch. We don't have someone available that has the Spanish language. And then the Apple one is for the court.
Do we split any of that money with the court with top finish since we are hearing your cases also?
We actually split the entire budget, so we look at monthly expenses and we bill that out, everything. So they pay a portion of the entire court cost.
Okay, so that, so that is reimbursed back to us in a different matter than what we have here.
Correct. So we pay all of the bills, and then at the end of the month, we look at how many tickets and we take appropriate a share and they pay for everything.
All right. The next question. I didn't know we still had a PD Explorer post. Do we still have one? And if we do, how many kids do we have in it?
Can I defer this question to Chief Escalera?
Please.
Yes, we do have an Explorer post. It is active. We have about seven to 10 members in it right now, and they are currently recruiting. Now that they've kind of lifted some of the, the COVID issues and some of the bans that they're working through, but they are recruiting actively at the moment.
Great. I'm glad to see that. I think that's, I think that's a really good program that we can offer to our youth.
Yeah, it definitely helps us.
Okay, and then this one, I may want to pull, but I, I'm going to go with $2,439.40 check to Mark Casey. What was that for?
That check is his benefits that we're continuing to pay his wages until he either finds another job or three months. That was his severance in his contract. And that has been reviewed by two attorneys that we are legally obligated to pay back.
I have read this contract and read it and reread it. And I'm not an attorney, but I, but I, but I think we're getting the short end of the stick on this. The other thing that shoot, no, it just came in and out. Yeah, did our city attorney read this contract over and before it was submitted to us?
Yes, the city attorney reviewed it before it was submitted to us.
Okay, and he never brought this particular problem up, is that correct?
Not that I'm aware of. I wasn't a part of the discussions at that time because I was not in the position I'm in now, so I wouldn't have been a part of those discussions.
And is our city attorney one who has said now we have to pay it?
Yes, the city attorney reviewed it, and then an outside employment law firm called Summit Law reviewed it that specializes in personnel and contract issues.
I would like to pull this off the off the consent agenda, and I'd like a separate vote on this. I think we need maybe get a third opinion. I'm not happy with this contract or this contractor, what we're having to do at all. I think he knew darn well what he was, what he was doing when he did this.
Also, do you want to pull what check number or claim number?
Transaction number is 14746.
Okay, so do you want to put it to a vote then to see what's going on? Because if you read it twice already by two different attorneys, I think we're in the hook for this. Obviously, it's not ideal. But at the end of the day, you know, we can spend as many dollars in attorneys to review it. If two different attorneys already reviewed it and they say we're in the hook for it. Your point is we'll take it, obviously, but at the end of the day, you know, I don't see why we should want to go with a third attorney to get the same answer. Just a waste of money, as I can tell.
Well, the wording is clear to me, but the intent is crystal clear to me. And I, and I don't, I don't think it's right. I would be willing to pay to have another attorney look at this. I don't know how many more months. We got two more months of this to go yet, is that correct?
The last payment would be on the 25th of November, I believe.
So he's already got one payment. This is, this is the second one, is that correct?
He received his cash out, and he's, this would be the second one, yes.
All right.
Okay, so when I make a, before we go forward, any additional questions, comments, or any additional items to get pulled from the consent agenda? Okay, here none. What is the desire council on the consent agenda minus item 14746?
Move to approve that.
Second, this is Counselor Stucci.
Okay, motion by Counselor Beeter, second by Counselor Stucci to approve the consent agenda as presented. Mine is item number 14746. Is there any debate on this item? You know, debate, we'll do roll call on this one. Deputy clerk.
Mayor Guerrero.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Borisma.
Yes.
Counselor Rastucci.
Yes.
Counselor Beeler.
Yes.
Counselor Hicks.
Yes.
Counselor Farmer.
Yes.
Counselor Hart.
Yes.
Mayor, you have seven yes votes and zero no.
Okay, so that motion passes, counsel. So what is your desire on that ticket number 14746 regarding our former city manager's payout? I know a little bit of history. I believe it was myself and a couple of council members. I'm not sure exactly what it was that we sat down and worked on that contract to be able to try to incorporate that in. Though he did bring that up as an option to increase to five months. If I remember correctly, we stuck to a three-month timeframe instead of increasing it farther out. So I am aware that that happened, and the end goal was to try to encourage future city managers to stay longer term by increasing months of severance by years of service. So I don't recall exactly if Deputy Mayor Borisma was in there or was Counselor Stucci. But I know there was three of us that worked on that, and if you recall a little bit differently, can you please share with that, the rest of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I kind of recall along the same lines as you that he did want to have it for a longer period of time, and we felt that if we do it incrementally, like you said, added on years of experience that it would encourage city managers to stay on longer, and we wouldn't have such a high turnover rate. This is the kind of thing that, as I recall, and Counselor Rastucci can correct me here. He's got a little more expertise in this area, but these are the types of things that are kind of standard on city manager contracts. And so in some form or other, it's going to appear in any city manager contract that we have. If after the fact, of course, it's going to be a little bit painful to pay for it. But this is something that, that it is an incentive, so. I remember that conversation.
That is correct. And when we drew up this contract, this is a boiler, this started with a boilerplate contract that we received from the International City Managers Association, along with the Washington City Managers Association as well. So it was endorsed by the state, by, by managers in Washington State as well as managers on the national and international standard. And so, I mean, these documents have been reviewed multiple times by multiple attorneys in the past. I understand Mr. Farmer's concerns, but to be honest with you, we're kind of caught between a rock and a hard place, and we have to pay this bill. That's just the way I feel.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilman Farmer again.
Yes, sir.
I'm not disputing the fact that if we fired him or discharged him from his business, we would owe him this. But the contract is kind of saying that if he quits, he's not eligible for this money. If he quits on his own accord. That's, that's where I'm coming from. Not, not that, not that if we fired him, he certainly gets, the wording is very clear in the contract. He certainly gets the money, but if he quits, then the contract does not, in my reading of the contract, does not allow for him to collect the money. And if it's not word for word, it is certainly the intent of the contract. I don't know how many of you people have read his contract. I've read it several times now.
Well, I could tell I read it. I know obviously a couple customers read it, and two other attorneys have read it. So I'm, I'm not sure about the rest of council, but it sounds like, I mean, we need to bend down the, that contract in the future. If that's the case, if it's, I know it doesn't say specifically if he resigns or if he steps off that, of the position that he won't get the severance. So to me, it's just one of those parts of doing business, you know, cashing out. I mean, I wish we didn't have all that cash out that were not where they were seeing employees that left us. You know, some employees take over $10,000, and that's a big hit to the bottom line, no matter who it is. That's just the way we negotiate a contract. That is just the way government works, you know. That probably been heard of at a private business, certainly not, you know, a mall, mom, pop shop. But this is, this is government, and that's just kind of like, Counselor, you just said boilerplate. That's how they work these contracts, and we're just the ones signing the checks, basically. We not agree to it, we not like it, but we want to recruit qualified individuals to be in those positions. I think that's something that's almost expected from some individuals. Counselors, anyone else, or you want to put it to a vote? What's the desire council on this? Counselor Hart, did we guys say something?
I would just like to make motion to go ahead and pay for the transaction 14746 regarding the capacity manager's compensation. So my motion is to approve it, prove it.
And I'll second that. This is Counselor Stucci.
Okay, the motion is to, motion by Counselor Hart, second by Counselor Stucci to pay our former city manager his compensation for what I wrote down. Sounds about right, Counselor Hart?
Yes.
Is there any debate on this motion? You know, debate, can we get roll call on this item? Deputy City Clerk Roundhill.
Mayor Guerrero.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Borisma.
Yes.
Counselor Rastucci.
Yes.
Counselor Beeler.
Yes.
Counselor Hicks.
Yes.
Counselor Farmer.
No.
Counselor Hart.
Yes.
Mayor, you have six yes and one no vote.
Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, up next, we have our active agenda, which is going to consist, the first item is Nova Time ARPA funding. Consider authorizing the interim city manager to sign an agreement with Andrews Technology to provide the city of Sunnyside with Nova Time timekeeping hardware slash software system and five-year maintenance contract. Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Guerrero. I am going to pass this item to Finance and Admin Services Director Horner, and she will present the item.
Good evening, council. This, this is the same item that we spoke about at the recent workshop to have this product Nova Time, which allows timekeeping with no touch and thermal readings for temperature. And so this first year cost is $55,381.09, which does include one-time costs. One-time cost of $32,355, and then the ongoing annual subscription of $21,484 going forward for five years. Are there any questions?
Okay, council member, as deputy city mayor Borisma, questions or comments on this item?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Counselor Rastucci.
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Beeler.
No questions.
Counselor Hicks.
My question is, it seems kind of high, but if you add in the paperwork and time the other staff has to spend trying to congratulate everyone, I'm still for it.
Counselor Farmer.
Yes, I'm for it.
Counselor Hart.
I think it's a great plan.
And I just have one question. At the workshop, we talked about getting refunded through ARPA funding for this. What about the consecutive, the next three years or so with, when we have the ARPA funding still available? What would be able to apply for, to cover the cost of the service going over those three, four years?
That's correct. The ARPA funding will cover this subscription up through the year 2024. So the first year that we will have to pay for that out of pocket is 2025.
Just one last question. Is there the contract itself, I know it's coming forward, but is it going to be a clause in it that we can break the contract in case we don't see all the benefits that we anticipate? And in the past, we've got some programs, and it just doesn't work out, and we end up just dropping it. But if you guys, city hall, just looks at it, and this just, it was great on paper, but once you try to implement it, it just did not pan out. Is that going to be in there somewhere that we can break that contract to be in the hook for the next four, five years?
There is a clause in the contract allowing for, if the funds are no longer appropriated by council. So council would have the ability to decide whether or not they wanted to appropriate funds for this each year.
Thank you. That's my last question.
Mr. Mayor, it's a standard protection that councils have in this state. That's how we stop a payment is by coming together and saying we refuse to make that payment or whatever, or we refuse to allocate funds for that particular project. And when we do, then there's no way that the vendor can hold us responsible under the contract because the council's the governing body and decides where the finance of the city go. They could sue us, but that, we have to take that chance.
Any additional questions or comments on this item, council? Okay, hearing none. What is desire on this item?
I'll move to approve. This is Counselor Hicks.
I will second it. This is Deputy Mayor Borisma.
Okay, motion by Counselor Hicks, second by Deputy Mayor Borisma to authorize the interim city manager to an agreement with Andrews Technology to provide the city of Sunnyside with a Nova Time timekeeping hardware slash software system and a five-year maintenance contract. Is there any debate on this item? You know, debate, can we get a roll call on this item, please?
Mayor Guerrero.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Borisma.
Yes.
Counselor Rastucci.
Yes.
Counselor Beeler.
Yes.
Counselor Hicks.
Yes.
Counselor Farmer.
Yes.
Counselor Hart.
Yes.
Mayor, you have seven yes votes and zero no.
Thank you. Motion passes. Up next, we have Title VI Non-Discrimination Agreement. Consider authorizing the interim city manager to sign the letter of intent to comply with the US DOT and WS DOT Title VI Plan and Non-Discrimination Assurances to allow the city of Sunnyside to receive federal financial assistance. Madam City Manager.
I'll defer this to the Public Works Director Fisher.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Oh, yeah, this agenda item is a little bit of housekeeping. Every few years when we receive federal funding, we have to go through this process to make sure that we're not discriminating against anybody as far as race, color, national origin, those sorts of things. So since we have our South Sixth Street project is coming up next year, we are receiving funding through STP, which is a federal funding agency that's a trickle-down through WashDOT. We are required to, to make sure this is up to date. So with that, I can answer any questions.
Okay, we'll start with Counselor Rastucci. Questions or comments on this item?
No questions or comments, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Beeler.
No questions or comments.
Counselor Hicks.
No questions or comments.
Counselor Farmer.
No questions or comments.
Counselor Hart.
No questions.
Counselor, Deputy, Deputy Mayor Borisma.
No questions for me either, sir.
And no question for me either. So at this point, what is desire council on this item?
Move to approve. This is Counselor Beeler.
Counselor Hart, second.
Okay, motion by Counselor Beeler, second by Counselor Hart to authorize the interim city manager to sign the letter of intent to comply with the US DOT and WS DOT Title VI Plan and Non-Discrimination Assurances to allow the city of Sunnyside to receive federal financial assistance. Is there any debate on this item? There ain't no debate. Can we get roll call, please?
Mayor Guerrero.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Borisma.
Yes.
Counselor Rastucci.
Yes.
Counselor Beeler.
Yes.
Counselor Hicks.
Yes.
Counselor Farmer.
Yes.
Counselor Hart.
Yes.
Mayor, you have seven yes votes and zero no.
Thank you. Motion passes. Up next, we have our 2022 Adval Lauren Public Hearing. When I receive public comment on the 2022 Adval Lauren Public Hearing, this public hearing is being held to receive public comment on the 2022 Adval Lauren. I will now read the appearance of fairness disclosure. The concern is that this hearing be fair in form and substance as well as appearance. Council members, do any of you have a conflict of interest concerning this issue? Do any of you stand to gain or lose any financial benefit as a result of the outcome of this hearing? If your answer is yes, please speak now. Council members, can you hear and consider this in a fair and objective manner? If your answer is no, please speak now. Audience members on Zoom, at this time, we will ask the audience if there are any objections to my participation or any other council members' participation in these proceedings. Hearing objections, this public hearing is now open at 6. Hearing objections, this public hearing is now open at 6:58 PM. At this time, we'll hear from our city manager if we received any comments from the public for this hearing, or if there are any citizens here to comment. If there are anyone in the audience who wishes to speak, please do so now. Okay, here. Madam City Manager, anyone submit public comment for this item, for this public hearing?
We received no public comments.
Okay, now we want to, council members, any questions or comments on this public hearing? Hearing no questions, this public hearing is now closed at 6:59 PM. Now we'll get, this time we will hear from our city manager. You have to, I think you can use some insight into this?
And actually, I'm going to pass this over to Finance and Admin Services Director Warner. I'd like her to take the lead on the finance stuff from now on.
No problem. So we are required by RCW to hold a public hearing each year on any increase to our Ad Valorem property tax levy. And there's statutory requirements that we have this hearing before November 30th. And we are we are limited to the amount that we can increase our property tax levy to 1% or the IDP, which is the implicit price deflator, which this year was higher than 1%. So the max we can request is 1%, which is what we will be requesting. So last year's property tax levy amount was two million, three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and nineteen cents. We'll be requesting the 1% increase to that. And additionally, we'll take a little bit of extra for new construction and property improvements that we've gotten over the years. So our total tax levy as requested for 2022 is the maximum amount, two million, four hundred and forty thousand, four dollars and twenty-five cents.
Thank you. And this will come back to us obviously for an action item. So today was just a public hearing portion of it. So thank you for that reporting. We'll look forward to seeing here in the action item. Okay, up next, we have our LTAC recommendations. Consider authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Miss Sunnyside Committee and sort for the cause for 2022 lodging tax funds and the amounts recommended. Madam City Manager.
Well, since I did not attend this meeting, I was hoping I could ask Deputy Mayor Burisma to report out for LTAC.
And here I am, ready to go. So we, at Council's direction, met two days after the council directed us to move forward on that. And we discussed the Miss Sunnyside Community Float and also the Sort for the Cause, which got their application in a little bit late. We had some pretty good discussion there. It was a very good meeting. Excuse me. I had just taken a bite of some food when my turn came up, so I apologize. So what we've done is we've recommended $2,000 for the Miss Sunnyside Community Float, but also to encourage them to look for other sources of funding. Most community floats find funding from other alternative sources, and so we would like to encourage our girls to do the same. And then for Sort for the Cause, they got their application in late, and it's a good organization, and they do good things, and we wanted to help. But at the same time, we don't want to set a precedent where people turn it in a few days later, a few weeks later, whatever, and they get their money without any kind of issue. So they didn't get what they asked for in our recommendation, but we are recommending $2,000 for each of these organizations.
Thank you for that report. We'll go down our list for questions or comments, and we'll start with Councilor Beeler.
No questions or comments.
Councilor Hicks.
No questions or comments.
Councilor Farmer.
I'm a little concerned, and I don't think it will be a problem if the court comes up a little bit short. I would certainly like for them to be able to come back and ask for some more of this money. I I think these girls and this organization represent our city well, and I would like to give them as much support as we can.
Councilor Hart.
I'm in favor of the LTAC recommendations.
Councilor Estucci.
I too agree with the sentiments of my colleagues. I support the recommendations, the LTAC. One thing, though, Council, when we just, when we go into budget this year and we start talking about things for next year, I would really like to find a way that we could have sustainable funding for the Miss Sunnyside program, the court, the ambassadorship piece of it. I mean, you know, I hate the fact that they have to worry every year that they have to come before LTAC to get funds to fund their operations. So, I mean, this is something where, this is truly something where they are representing our city when they go to other cities. And so I think we should fund it. You know, like fireworks, I believe that that's just something that we should fund. So that's my personal belief. My one question for you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, was the vote unanimous on all decisions?
It was. We had some good debate on it, and there was some strong disagreement. Mr. Denly was able to be there at that meeting, which made for a very good meeting. I very much appreciate his presence. But you know, the question is, how many heads in bed does that does that event bring us? And so that's where we went around and around and around, and so we agreed. And it was mostly an agreement because it was council's desire that we fund this. So LTAC found a way to fund it, but it wasn't LTAC's necessarily desire to fund it. It was because council asked us to fund it.
A follow-up, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Was Commissioner Denly forthcoming with his numbers?
He was.
Wonderful. That's good to hear.
So I, obviously, I do believe in this program a lot, and I think it's a great representation of our city. And in the past, they did quite a bit of sponsorships in the flows, and they had logos of companies and local businesses who supported their flow efforts. And I'm sure they're going to get some of that funding. But I do believe we have to eventually have them be self-supported and be able to raise their own funding in one way or another. I know there's plenty of business in town who are willing to support the flow. They love the fact that we are doing so many parades, and they go represent Sunnyside elsewhere. And I don't see, you know, there's has to be a way for that group to be able to reach out to businesses and be able to get some additional support, not just rely on LTAC funding every single year. Because LTAC may not be there one year, and they're fully expected to be funded through the LTAC. And one day, one year, the, you know, laws change, and there's no longer funding, then we're going to be stuck without any representation. And then we might have to worry about the general fund funding, something like this. So I really want them to be self-sufficient. Yes, we can do some support, you know, but slowly, I think in the past, we talked about slowly pulling back those numbers to the point that they're self-sufficient, to the point that they don't have to rely on LTAC and be able to still operate without having to rely on LTAC every single year. I do, I really appreciate the work that they do and they represent the community. I just feel like they really could go a little bit extra harder in trying to find local funding for sponsorships through businesses. Again, that's just my sentiment on that, on this point, but I do feel that there is room for growth there, for opportunity. But I do support the recommendation of LTAC. Having been there in the past, I know there, it is some interesting conversations that happen at those LTAC meetings, especially when there's the full forum there. And it does get fairly interesting, the conversations at times. So I don't envy you that Deputy Mayor Burisma. It is an interesting group of individuals, and I recommend this fully based on your recommendation of the group. Thank you for taking the lead on that and being the lead on the LTAC. Appreciate that.
My pleasure. I enjoy doing it.
Glad to hear. All right, Council, any last questions for Deputy Mayor Burisma? Okay, hearing none. What is the motion of council?
This is Councilor Beeler. I move that we approve the LTAC recommendations.
I'll second that. Councilman Hart.
Okay, motion by Councilor Beeler, second by Councilor Hart to authorize the interim city manager to enter into an agreement with the Miss Sunnyside Committee and sort for the cause for the 2022 lodging tax funds and the amounts recommended. Is there any debate on this item?
Mr. Mayor, just real quick, and this is obviously for my position here, but I would argue that we spend more than $2,000 a year on other organizations to promote Sunnyside, and this group automatically promotes Sunnyside every time they go somewhere. So that's my argument, Mr. Mayor. I'm in favor of the motion.
Any additional debate?
Mayor, this is Julia Hart again. I would agree with Councilman Estucci. Having served as a float parent several years ago, it was truly awesome to see the recognition that our float and our girls got and the way that they interacted with the other communities, encouraged them to come to our community. You know, and kids did, they did. So I think this is a valuable program as far as tourism goes. It may not exactly be a head-in-bed sort of situation. Nonetheless, it is a great advertising gimmick, and I do also vote in favor of this.
Okay, any additional debate on this item? Okay, hearing none. Can we get roll call, please?
Mayor Guerrero.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Burisma.
Yes.
Councilor Estucci.
Yes.
Councilor Beeler.
Yes.
Councilor Hicks.
Yes.
Councilor Farmer.
Yes.
Councilor Hart.
Yes.
Mayor, you have seven yes votes and zero no.
Motion passes. Thank you. Up next, we have Department of Retirement Past Due Reconciliation and Payment. Consider authorizing the interim city manager to pay the Department of Retirement thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-one cents for the past due contributions. Madam City Manager.
And I apologize, my dog is deciding to bark, so if he does, I'll try to get him to be quiet. So when I was the financial analyst and started doing our bank reconciliations, I suspected that the Department of Retirement was incorrect. The former human resource assistant apparently didn't reconcile the account or provide backups for the payments. She repeatedly transmitted with errors. She did not make timely payments and then did not update our system for rate changes. So in 2018, the payroll system was fully executed in bias. That's when I took over management of the Human Resource Department. And we basically have been trying to pull together these records for years now, and my payroll clerk, Esmeralda Choa, is finally making headway on this. So after it's all said and done, we will need to pay Department of Retirement in past due accounts thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-one cents. Now that amount may be reduced at some point because we do have a few credits, and we are going to ask the Department of Retirement if they will waive our finance fee or interest, but that's not guaranteed. This has been something that is, has been a real issue, not just with the Department of Retirement. We had every single account that didn't have things reconciled. So it's been a job to try to clean up this mess, but this is the last one that I would have to bring forward. And it does feel really good to actually know that now people's retirements will be correctly stated and that they will have the money in their account that they're entitled to. For this one, you will not see a payment in the amount directly of $37,000. We're going to pay them incrementally so that the interest does not continue to grow. So right now, we have $17,000 ready to go, but I wanted authorization for the whole amount so that we cannot exceed 37,000, and then hopefully have it be reduced.
Thank you for that report. We'll start with Councilor Hicks. Questions or comments on this item?
No questions or comments. Good catch, and finally getting caught up.
Councilor Farmer.
No questions. I too would like to commend the city for getting this mess cleaned up and cleared up.
Councilor Hart.
Good job catching it up, and I'm in favor of paying, what is it? Authorizing the series of repayments on this and the total amount.
Deputy Mayor Burisma.
Yeah, it's been a thorn in my side that we've had these types of issues as long as I've been on council. And the fact that we're getting to the end of it now, where we can see the light at the end of the tunnel, and it's not a train. But we're able to get this resolved and no longer a problem. I'm quite pleased. I am still disappointed that it ever got to happen in the first place, but nevertheless, let's get this done and behind us.
Councilor Estucci.
The deputy mayor said everything that needed to be said, so thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Beeler.
No additional questions or comments.
I don't know how, and I don't have any additional questions or comments. And like Deputy Mayor said, I know we've been talking about some of these items, and sounds like we're seeing the end of it. So I'm glad to see that it's coming to an end of all these late fees and late payments and just different things that we've talked about in this past several years. I thought we were done with it, but apparently we still have a couple others still. So looking forward to not seeing any more of these. And what is desire council on this item?
Move to approve. This is Councilor Estucci.
Second.
Councilor Beeler.
Council, we have a second from Hart already, so we'll take hers, okay? She spoke up first, so we'll get to the next one. Okay, motion by Councilor Estucci, second by Councilor Hart to authorize the NMCD manager to pay the Department of Retirement thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-one cents for past due contributions. Is there any debate on this item? Hearing no debate, can we get a roll call, please?
Mayor Guerrero.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Burisma.
Yes.
Councilor Estucci.
Yes.
Councilor Beeler.
Yes.
Councilor Hicks.
Yes.
Councilor Farmer.
Yes.
Councilor Hart.
Yes.
Mayor, you have seven yes and zero no votes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Up next, we have Emergency ILA and Specific Project Agreement. City Autopanis Dispatch Services, consider authorizing the interim city manager to sign an inter-local agreement and specific project agreement with the City Autopanis for Emergency Dispatch Services. Madam City Manager.
And I will defer this to Police Chief Escobar for reporting out.
Good evening. I was contacted by the newly appointed Police Chief there, John Clary, Autopanish Police Department, and they are basically looking to get out of the dispatch business. They have several retirements that have happened already. They have one other that is currently on the way out due to retirement, which would leave them three dispatchers, which they they can't sustain with three. They would need about five or six in order to sustain their operation there. So he had asked that that we consider providing dispatch services for them on an emergency basis and also on a permanent basis. And he is also looking at other avenues with the county and also with Suncom. So it hasn't, it hasn't been anything really solidified with this, but the one thing that we do offer, we are pretty much ready to go to actually accommodate their needs, where Suncom and the county would have to upgrade and perhaps plug in some additional technology in order to make this happen. uh, technology in order to make this happen for them. So they're looking to us to assist them on an emergency basis. Um, I agreed to 30 days uh, to, to do that uh, without a formal agreement. Um, after an ILA has been agreed upon. So uh, the first step is just to, to settle the ILA uh, that we can work together on this, on this project and then uh, but I said I would, I would do it for uh, for 30 days. I don't know if uh, interim uh, City Manager Alba had, had changed that. I had put that in the wording initially. I had not had a chance to talk to her uh, over the weekend, but uh, we talked on Friday. And uh, that was the last uh, that uh, that was the last number I had put in there.
And actually, I spoke with uh, City Manager Lance Hoyt from Toponish this afternoon. And he would like to um, have our 30 days start November 1st and end at the end of November, just so we have enough time to get this um, kind of together. He said that he can use police officers and pay some overtime if he needs to, um, just to get us to November 1st. So he would like to know if that would be possible because he did not bring this forward to his council meeting, which is tonight. So it would go to their council on the 25th of October.
Uh, yeah, so on my end, that would probably work out even better for us because uh, to, to start this on uh, October 15th was a rush. Uh, we had uh, Raycom come in and they, they uh, submitted the cards and we were robust enough in order to handle those and handle the frequencies that'd be required to, to uh, take on this, this project. So we're just about good to go. We have a little bit more to deal with uh, uh, with some repeater issues, but other than that, I think we're going to be good. So November 1st actually works in our, in our favor.
Hey, Council, we'll go down a list for questions or comments, and we'll start with Councilor Farmer.
Um, I'm not sure about the $3,000, but if we can, it's a temporary thing. Uh, I guess I could go with it.
Councilor Hart?
This is an emergency situation, but did I not understand from the chief's comments that this might be something that might become more permanent? And a different kind of agreement would need to be established?
That is correct. We would enter into a formal contract for services, much like we do with their municipal court, municipal court. Um, so that would need to be a separate agreement.
Okay, but as yet their council has not taken any action on this particular issue.
Correct, because it was not brought forward to their council and it won't be until their next meeting. Their meetings coincide with ours.
Okay, so we don't actually need to do anything on this tonight then?
No, we would need to enact the ILA just so that we have it in place for emergency services. Um, we have one of these with Grandview mapped and imposter already.
Okay.
Um, so this is not anything different than what we have with other cities. It allows us to be able to share equipment and personnel um, on a temporary basis. Um, and, and we do use it for public works items and, and other things.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Borzma?
All my questions just got answered, sir. Thank you.
Councilor Rustucci?
No questions or comments, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Beeler?
No questions or comments.
Councilor Hicks?
My only question is, this isn't going to overtax what we have going already.
Um, the chief and I have talked about it and we can handle it in a temporary situation, but if we do permanently um, do this, we will need to hire additional staff. And that cost would need to be um, borne by the City of Toponish. So when we bring back any kind of agreement, make sure that was clear and funded.
That's my only question.
So I, I have a question. This is the amount of expenditure to, and would, are we just budgeting a dollar amount so we could charge Toponish for services in the event that they do use us for emergency dispatch services?
We just put kind of a number out that we may have in, in overtime if it, if it necessitate, if it's necessary during the, you know, interim. Um, but really honestly, we'll be negotiating uh, very clearly on how much it costs and in the future. So I don't think that, you know, really just trying to make sure that they pay, pay their prorated share right now. Um, the biggest thing is trying to help them at least deliver some dispatch services because right now they're kind of in a rock and a hard place with staff.
Yeah, and I'm sure what wants to get to that stage will be able to not just do an hourly rate, but the cost of the actual employee with benefits and everything. So I'm sure that that's going to be something that's going to be looked at. So I, I like it. I was glad to be able to help other communities and I'm sure they're going to help us in a time of, of need. So uh, I like this ILA. Um, what is desire counsel on this item?
Councilor Hicks, I'll move to approve.
This is Deputy Mayor Borzma. I'll second.
Okay, motion by Councilor Hicks, seconded by Deputy Mayor Borzma to authorize the NMCD manager to sign an interlocal, interlocal agreement and specific project agreement with the City of Toponish for Emergency Dispatch Services. Is there any debate on this item?
No debate, just a comment, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, this is what the ILA legislation that was created by the state legislature is for, right? It's so that we can help our fellow neighbor um, when they need help. And when I was Chair of the Valley Mayor Association, um, many years ago, um, I can tell you that, that, that ILA tool came in handy many times between different cities in the valley when they were in, in a real, a real dire straits. So I'm glad that we have this tool available to us and I'm, and I support the, the motion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any additional debate on this item? Here we go, can we get a roll call, please?
Mayor Gueretto.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Borzma.
Yes.
Councilor Rustucci.
Yes.
Councilor Beeler.
Yes.
Councilor Hicks.
Yes.
Councilor Farmer.
Yes.
Councilor Hart.
Yes.
Mayor, you have seven yes and zero no votes.
Motion passes. Uh, thank you, Council. Up next, we have items from council members. Uh, first up is mayor's appointments for boards and commissions. I do, I do have an application for our lodging tax advisory committee. I'm not sure if our um, deputy city clerk was able to reach out to Mrs. Uh, Beeler regarding OPMA training. Do we know if she completed that part of it yet, or has submitted the, the forms necessary for us to move forward with this?
I spoke to her earlier today. She said she had completed the training. Um, I'm just waiting on her to submit her certificate. So we discussed about adding this, I meant, uh, sorry, adding this item to the next meeting.
Okay, so in that case, we'll defer this to our next uh, um, agenda, I mean, our next agenda, uh, council meeting. Our next council means agenda, so that way we could, we could uh, get this uh, uh, OPMA training um, certificates and file and we'd be able to move forward. Uh, besides that, I have another one that I received. I haven't had a chance to review it, but we'll bring those over to our next council meeting for your consideration, Council. Up next, we have our council request status report. Madam City Manager.
I didn't print a copy of it, so if I could have, there we go. So we did receive the um, disabled parking area ramp. Um, it came in on Friday. So this, they will be getting ready to get that started to being installed over at the senior center. Um, I'm not sure if you would allow us to go ahead and take this off since we've now got the ramp in our possession and we are getting ready to install.
Is there any objection, Council, to getting this removed now for uh, council request status?
Objection. Uh, this, Councilor Hart, I have no objection and I'm very excited to, to see that we're finally getting that situation taken care of. Thank you.
Sounds like we got the green light to remove that. Madam City Manager?
Great, thank you very much. Uh, next item is the tree replacement plan. As um, Public Works Fisher, Director Fisher has mentioned in the past, this was a fall item, so I believe we have already started on this and he's um, got trees that are either on their way or in the, in, in the ground. So if I could have Public Works Director Fisher give us an update.
Yeah, thank you, Elizabeth. So we went to try to order trees and it looks like the trees were trying to get put in there. We might not get till spring. Uh, we had a couple, we had replaced out on YVH a couple. We knew we were going to have a couple that didn't make it. That's just kind of the nature of planting 45 trees. You're going to have a couple that don't. Don't survive our hot summers uh, when they're young trees. So I had Kane Corner, uh, got ahold of uh, Roots Yakima, which is where we got those trees. And they're having a, a little bit of a tree shortage. So what we'll probably do is put our names in the hat for the eight or 10 trees that we want to uh, put um, in a couple of the areas that we've already ground out. Um, of course, we've got sidewalk we need to get replaced before we put the trees in. And that's kind of goes hand in hand with uh, part of our budget process this year is to set aside about $100,000 from the TBD um, uh, funding and revenues that have come in um, to replace these curbs and sidewalks uh, so we can get the trees planted. So more likely we'll get them ordered this fall and then get them actually put in the ground in the spring. I can answer any questions if there is.
Any questions or comments on this? I think we'll just leave it on there for now until we get some resolution, but um, yeah, I like the fact there's, there's progress. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
And then the guardrails on Riverside, we've um, had our first safety plan meeting and we'll be bringing that forward at the next council meeting. So as soon as that happens, then we will apply for grants to replace the guardrails. And police reserves, if I could have Police Chief Escalera update us on that.
Uh, currently, there's no change from the last report. Uh, we still have the, the one active reserve. And that's all we have in, in Hopper at the moment.
And Roger Brooks, I um, talked to you at the last meeting about my plan to take um, one piece at a time in this Roger Brooks presentation. Um, that is still in progress and is part of our budget development. So that one, I think we should just leave on until we can see some progress made and you can see what I've got going on with that. Um, Water Tower Project, our um, mural painter, he has brought forward ideas and is just right now waiting on getting his insurance or bond. And then increase in staff and planning and community development. We've actually done that. That's completed. We've hired one person and we're in the process of getting this second person hired. So I believe that one could actually be taken off if that's okay.
And you have just removed that item? You have no objection. You're good to go.
And then prosecutor RFP, that is something that um, will be, I'll be bringing forward um, probably next year. Um, there's some other moving parts in our court that need to be addressed before we do the prosecutor RFP. And I can discuss with that, that with you individually if you would like. And with that, I wanted to mention that I am trying to get our one-on-one meeting started so that you all have access to me and I can speak to you about things like this. And that's all I have on that one.
All right, Council, any additional items that you, you would like to see on the request status report?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I have one item. It's for the Public Works Director. This item's been on the list before and been removed. Um, but I think we need to put it back on because I'm getting a lot of complaints from people and that's the 35 mile an hour speed limit on Yakima Valley Highway. Um, I know we put paint down and, you know, we put large 35 mile an hour, you know, uh, painting on the roads and signs along the roadway, but we don't seem to be getting through the people and and I hear it all the time from people who travel Yakima Valley Highway that, you know, they can't get around people. They're doing 22, 23 and 25 miles an hour. So just bringing it again up for conversation for Council. I, I think we can do something to, to educate the public.
All right, we'll get that on our council request as well. Get uh, updates um, as we move forward. Any additional items, Council? Okay, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is going to be other reports, announcements and requests by Council, and we'll start with Councilor Hart.
Oh, thank you. And for, for once, I have nothing to report.
Oh, all right, move on to our Deputy Mayor Borzma.
All right, let's get me all my buttons pushed a minute. So with the LTAC meeting, um, we reported on what was recommended, but one of the things we talked about was the fact that many communities, the LTAC meets as much as once a month and are able to discuss things like the Yakima Valley Tourism Guide and the amount that's spent on that. And it would be a good, a good idea, excuse me, to uh, monitor that and see throughout the year and how that's going and if the money being spent or something like that is, is being used in the best way. And so what we've decided to do is we're at least going to meet every other month. So our next meeting is going to be in um, November. So we're going to try to meet a little bit more often. Um, in as much as we're doing it via Zoom, we can kind of meet from wherever we are, so that will be helpful. But uh, anyway, that's the goal for the next few months to see if we can meet a little bit more often and stay up to speed with what's going on and some of these things that LTAC supports and recommends.
Thank you. Um, next we have uh, Councilor Rustucci.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one item report. Uh, Monday, um, the Yakima Valley Council Government's Executive Committee uh, will meet um, to discuss the proposal that we sent to the commissioners in regards to the homeless program. Um, it was unanimous decision at the general membership meeting. Uh, we forwarded all the documentation to the county prosecutor's office to share with county commissioners. We're hoping that the commissioners will realize that the homeless program is better suited at the cog and not at the county. So I'll be able to hopefully to report good news at the next meeting, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Beeler?
I've got nothing at this point.
Councilor Hicks?
Nothing to report at this time.
Councilor Farmer?
Nothing to report at this time.
Um, and I just have one comment, I guess. Uh, I'm sure a few years I've probably seen the movement at Central Park for our skate park. There's been quite a few pieces of equipment out there, so I'm excited to see that moving forward and looking forward to hopefully once uh, um, it's all completed, Council can get out there and hopefully do a ribbon cutting and make sure we present to our community because I think it'll be a great addition to our central park for our youth to be able to get out there and um, burn up some, some calories and some energy in the, in the skate park. So looking forward to that for sure.
I expect to see you on a skateboard, Mr. Mayor.
Not if you don't expect to get some broken bones out of it, so.
When I open the first skate park in this city on behalf of the city, I got on a skateboard. You're going to have to get on a skateboard. And I got on a skateboard in the rain, Mr. Mayor.
So I, I want to say hopefully it's, it's done until after December, then it will, it'll be somebody's responsibility. So but yeah, me, me and skate, skateboards don't mix very well. So I'm not looking forward to that if it gets done before then, but I appreciate the the, the, the mental picture of you doing it on a skateboard. This, this, that will look interesting for sure. All right, Council, any additional um, items that you have to report or questions? All right, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is going to be upcoming council meetings. Madam City Manager?
So our next meeting, we will have the Ad Valorem Ordinance, the first reading or adoption. We are going to have the False Alarm Ordinance update, Lux Commercial Estates Preliminary Platte and the Kubota Tractor Repair. There will also be one item added that I forgot to uh, let the deputy city clerk know, and that will be Budget Amendment Number Three. So we will get that one on. Um, this is routine housekeeping item uh, for Budget Amendment Number Three, just all the, the things that we've done over the last three months. I want to make sure that we get those in. November 1st workshop, we will have our 2022 preliminary budget to council, so you'll all be able to see that. And the city safety plan will be presented. And then November 8th will be the 2022 preliminary budget first public hearing. And everything else on here is pretty much our regular items that we have. We do have scheduled a uh, December 6th workshop, the Sixth Street Improvement Project Update. And we're slated to do a budget adoption by the 13th of December.
Thank you. Council, is anyone else would like to add to the agenda, please let our city manager know and myself and we'll get that worked into our upcoming council meetings. Okay, up next, we have items from department heads. Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Guerrero. Some of you may wonder why I look the way I do today. A week and a half ago, I decided to exercise and I popped my rib out. And so I've been struggling with a bruised kind of sore rib. And last night I decided in my sleep to sleep on it. So I woke up this morning pretty painful. So I've been working from home today. I plan on being back in the office tomorrow. I just don't want to cough or sneeze. So this to let you know. And then other items last week was a really busy week. Met with you know, several of our different groups that was in my update last week. And on Friday was very fortunate to go to another ribbon cutting and what I call Spread the Joy of Sunnyside. Counselor Beeler and Counselor Farmer were there as well at Sylvia's Tech Service. She's opened up a little coffee cafe inside her building. The Sunnyside Court was there. She had a really nice ribbon cutting. And then that evening went to a woman in business networking potluck and really got to meet some of the people here that are looking to make some, some changes. And one of the things that keeps coming up and repeatedly, repeatedly is we need a Chamber of Commerce. And so I need to look into it and I may reach out to Deb Estrada and ask her. But someone said that we can no longer have a chamber because the chamber owes money. And so I want to investigate that. Maybe we don't call it a Chamber of Commerce and, you know, we call it something else. You know, and tourism promotion or something. I'm not sure. But I do know that not having a chamber is the reason why we're having to fund the float and we're having to do things that at other cities, they would pass money to the chamber and then the chamber is the one that gives that money out. And so that's really why we're in the situation we are. That's why we have LTAC money that we're actually funding. In the past, we would give the funding to chamber and the chamber would actually put on the events and do all of this. And now we're having to have community members step up. So I wanted to let everyone know that that is something that I'm going to try to get a series of meetings and see if we can get the businesses interested in in, in getting together and trying to do something, you know, as a community for our businesses and for tourism and things that we need to get growth here. And then on Wednesday, I have a meeting with Greg Schleeb to discuss signage out at the Farm Implement. I don't know what we're going to call it, but pathway. We want to make sure that before the project gets too far along, that we at least have one or two signs on either end that explains why we have tractors sitting here and kind of the, you know, history of, of our, our area and then also a plug to go visit the museum. We want to make sure that people know that we have a fabulous museum. And we want them to go visit it. So that's kind of the upcoming things that I have on my plate right now. And then I will defer now to Public Works Director Fisher.
I have nothing further to report. Thank you.
Police Chief Escalera.
I have nothing to report as well. Thank you.
Fire Chief Anderson. He was having trouble with his internet, so maybe he isn't on the call anymore. And then Admin Services Director Horner.
I have nothing further to report. Thank you.
All right, is that the last one, Madam City Manager?
Deputy City Clerk Rangel, do you have anything to report for the clerk's office?
I don't have anything to report.
Thank you.
All right, so there being no further business to come before council and without objection. I adjourned this meeting at seven forty-three PM. Thank you, everyone, and have a good rest of the evening, night.
Good evening, everyone.
Everyone.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. Good night. Not all.